Dr. Newman?
Here.
And Mr. Fraley?
Here. Thank you, Lenny. We do have a full quorum into our regular agenda.
Before we begin the regular agenda, we do have a request that item number one of the City Planning Commission for a zoning text amendment to Table 9A of the city zoning ordinance to include microbrewery is an allowable use by special exception in the HCG3 Gan Historic and Cultural Conservation District, as well as application number two by Champion Brewing Company LLC with the following applications at 739 Yoruba Street: A, a change of zoning from HCG1 Gan Historic and Cultural Conservation District to HCG3; and B is a special exception to operate a microbrewery. Request is that those be, both of those applications be continued to August 24th, 2017. The motion therefore is to continue the items to the public hearing to be held on Thursday, August 24, 2017 at 2:30 PM, City Council Chambers, 11th Floor, City Hall Building, Norfolk, Virginia. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Haljens?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Thank you, Lenny. Item three?
Item three, the Way of Truth Church for the following special exception applications at 2322 Malpia Avenue. A is to operate a religious institution and B is to operate a daycare center.
All right. This is a request for two special exceptions for a religious institution and for a daycare center. The site is located on Malpia Avenue, which is within the Broad Park community, and it's developed mainly with single-family uses and some institutional uses like churches present. And this is a picture of the zoning map showing that it's all zoned, R8, single-family. The reason why this first special exception is coming in front of you, the request for to operate a religious institution, is because in order to apply for a special exception to operate a daycare center, daycare center is only permitted in a residential zoning district if it is accessory to a conforming non-residential use, like a church. So they're coming into full compliance by getting the special exception for the religious institution and then also asking for the special exception to operate a daycare center. And I'll just point out on the map that you see here, the entire church and the daycare center has access to off-lot parking directly across the street. It's a parking lot sufficient to meet the parking requirements for both the church and the daycare center. So here's a look at the hours for the daycare, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and these hours don't conflict with the operation of the church. With that, we do have a letter in your packet from the Lindenwood Cottage Heights Broad Park Civic League, and that is a recommendation of support. They support the request, and then planning staff also supports both requests. Any questions?
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions of Mr. Simon, commissioners?
All right.
Thank you, Matt. Here representing this application is the applicant, Marjorie Edwards. Ms. Edwards, you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you, man. We'll just note that for the record. Any comment, commissioners? There are none, Mr. Newcomb?
The motions recommend that the applications be approved, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Haljens?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
I will make the recommendation to council. Good luck.
All right. Item number four is Be Brilliant Home Learning Daycare for special exception to operate a daycare home, which is more than nine children, at 1588 Cowan Avenue.
Good afternoon. This is an application from the Be Brilliant Home Learning Daycare, and it's located at 1588 Cowan Avenue, and they're asking for a special exception for the daycare. It's in the Fox Hall neighborhood, along Cowan Avenue, at the intersection of Kilmer Lane and Cowan Avenue, in a single-family residential neighborhood. And the proposal would be to operate a daycare with up to 12 children. So this is the zoning map here, and the neighborhood is zoned R6, single-family. Daycare homes are allowed by special exception, and if the lot has at least 10,000 square feet in area, then they can apply for a special exception to have a daycare with up to 12 children, or in other words, more than nine children. And the other requirements for the daycare home are to have a fenced play area with a six-foot solid fence around the play area, which I believe they have already, and enough space to accommodate three parkings, off-street parking spaces. Here's another aerial of the site, and as well as the survey provided to staff of the property. This is just to show you that the lot has a lot of frontage along Cowan Avenue, approximately 123 feet, and the application was sent to the Fox Hall Civic League, and we got some information or some concerns from neighbors about the traffic that it would potentially generate, and the concern about cars not being able to turn around to exit the property and causing a little bit of a traffic situation in the neighborhood. So the conditions of this special exception require that the, not only the other things that I mentioned about the fenced play area and the hours of operation, which are actually from 7:00 AM until 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and then it's closed on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. The outdoor play area would be open from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, same day as Monday through Friday, closed on the weekend. And the conditions also apply to the driveway on the site, so the idea is that whenever the applicant decides to come in to construct the driveway, whether it's an expansion of the existing driveway or a new driveway, staff will review her plans and make sure that it complies with zoning ordinance requirements. In this case, she will have to provide at least three parking spaces along, on the driveway. However it's configured, staff will work with the applicant to make sure that it meets zoning ordinance requirements. And with that, staff recommends approval with the conditions as proposed.
Chris, just for clarity, I did hear you say that you will be working with the applicant to make sure that the appropriate parking spaces are on-site?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Any other questions of Mr. Whitney, commissioners? Thank you, Chris. Here to speak in favor of this application is the applicant, Munira Miller. Ms. Miller, please tell me I got your name right.
Munira.
Munira. I was close. Thank you.
I'm resident at 1588 Cowan Avenue. I just wanted to clarify that we have a few different options to expand my driveway, and so upon completion of my contract in the Navy, I will go about this, but I have about 11 months to really go through all this. But yeah, so we either gonna expand, because we have about 10 feet width, so we're gonna expand about six more feet, or, you know, we're gonna either implement another driveway or try to do some type of horseshoe, so that no one has to back out, they can just go around. But at the time, we'll figure out what we want to do. That's all I want to say.
Please make sure you figure it out with our staff.
I will. Yes.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Lenny?
The motions recommend that the special exception be approved, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Haljens?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
I will make the recommendation to council. Good luck.
The next application is the Tamarine Indian Street Food for a special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment at 415 through 445 North Military Highway, Suite 27.
So this is an application from Tamarine Indian Street Food at 415-445 North Military Highway, Suite 27. It's a special exception for an eating and drinking establishment. It's an existing eating establishment. Right now, so their proposal is to add alcohol to the existing establishment. It's located on the west side of North Military, within the Best Square Shopping Center, which is developed with a variety of commercial uses. And so again, this is just to add on-premise alcohol to an existing eating establishment. Zone C3 Retail Center Commercial District, which allows these special exceptions by, or eating and drinking establishments by special exception. And so they're not changing their layout or anything, or their hours of operation. So they are proposing 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, fairly limited hours, from Tuesday to Sunday, closed on Mondays, and then the capacity is 26 seats indoors, no seats outdoors, and then 29 total capacity. In addition, the application was sent to the Poplar Hall and Glen Rock Civic Leagues on June 13. And with that, staff recommends approval of this application with the proposed conditions.
Thank you, Chris. Any feedback from the Poplar Hall Civic League?
I did not receive any formal feedback from the Civic League. I did receive a phone call from a member of the Civic League who may be here today to speak to his concerns about it.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions of Mr. Whitney, comment, commissioners? Thank you, Chris. Chair wants to acknowledge that the applicant, Alan Sullivan, is here to answer any questions. And also, we want to acknowledge here against this application, Burrell Corbin. Mike, the podium is yours, sir.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Burrell Corbin. I reside at 5500 Berry Hill Road in this section of Poplar Hall in the city of Norfolk, Virginia. I'm the president of the Civic League. Our main concern is that we have a lot of night walkers, being that the union mission is on the boulevard. They cut through, now going to the Blood Plasma, which is located in that facility where this Indian, the street food service would like to get application for alcohol. We feel strongly against the alcohol. I see they serving ice cream to kids. As a general, we feel strongly against the alcohol part. So I represent, as I said, the Poplar Hall Civic League, and I haven't received any letters from you all as of yet, but I did go by the establishment just to see how things was yesterday. So...
You had an opportunity to meet with the applicant?
I met the gentleman yesterday while I was out in the parking lot. I don't see him here today, but that was it. Just hello, and I was just outside looking and seeing what was going on. And like I said, we do have, there is a Blood Plasma facility in that area where there will be people walking, I mean, doing what they have to do, where there's alcohol and that.
You're aware of the hours of operation and the size of the restaurant? So you're civically met and voted against this?
I'm just now seeing that, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. But then you can sell alcohol, well, you would like to sell alcohol on Sunday, 11:00 AM. That's kind of a no-no as well. I believe council's going something else about selling alcohol, but that's what we feel.
Yes, sir.
So am I hearing you saying that the applicant has not presented to the Civic League?
No, sir. That is correct.
Does your Civic League meet during the summer months?
Yes, sir.
And you did note that the hours of operation, Tuesday through Sunday, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which is a pretty limited window for operation for enterprises of this type?
Well, could I ask a question?
Sure.
What is the code for residents' homes for alcohol for being around establishments? Is that, like I read something, 300 feet? Is that correct?
No, sir. We send a letter to everybody within 300 feet of an application. There are no established laws that prohibit how close anyone is to anything else. Could you give me your email address, please?
Yes.
Go ahead.
B.M. Corbin III.
Three.
Three. The number three.
Right. At Cox.net?
Cox.net.
All right. On June 13th, we emailed you the notice of this hearing?
Really? I have to check it again, sir.
Okay.
And the only reason I know, one of the residents, I guess, city sent her a letter, being that she's in the back of that establishment. That's how I found out.
She's within the 300 feet?
Right, sir. That's how I found out.
I think it was an earlier question. I didn't hear your answer. Did your Civic League vote against this application?
I haven't had a chance. I'm just representing the Civic League.
I got you.
We won't meet until the 7th of August. But I have to check my email. He said he sent it to me.
It would have been June 13.
Thank you, sir.
Any other question, comment, commissioners? In light of, you know, we typically like to see opportunities where Civic Leagues are clued in and the applicant has an opportunity to share his thoughts and ideas with the surrounding community. Is the applicant here? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Might you consider, sir, taking time to meet with this Civic League and express to them what your operation would be like and how it may or may not impact their community?
Mr. Chairman, Alan Sullivan, 429 York Street. Thank you. You know, as Mr. Newcomb noted, we did send out notice on the 13th. We heard no opposition back. This is a very modest establishment. The applicant apologized for not being able to be here today. He's operating the restaurant. So, you know, from 11:00 to 8:00 PM in this corridor, it's not uncommon for restaurants to serve alcohol. I don't think this is an unreasonable request. So if you would like us to go back and sit down with them and meet, we certainly can. I don't know that it's going to change this gentleman's mind, Mr. Corbin's mind, but, you know, we just want to move forward with the application.
Understood. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Corbin, commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Question for staff as far as other establishments in this corridor. I assume there's other eating, drinking establishments with hours that are similar or more...
Usually later. I mean, you know, these people close at 8:00.
Yeah, that's kind of late.
That's an unusual closing time, and the size of it is rather small. I was going to say, I think we have within the 1,000 feet on-premise consumption appears to be two others and two off-premises.
So there's off-premises well nearby, and this is an application for only on-premise sale?
That's correct. But when we do the run for the ABC licenses, you get them all.
Sure.
There's a CVS Pharmacy, there's a Military Circle Shell. They're both off-premise. They're at the intersection of Poplar Hall and Military. Norfolk Garden and Itron Japanese Ramon, which I think is one that came before us not long ago. They are also within that realm.
Thank you, Lenny. Any, Mr. Haljens?
I would agree with the applicant that this isn't an unreasonable request. However, I would, you know, I would agree that it's not an unreasonable request, as we have routinely asked that most applicants meet with the local Civic League, just so that they could at least have their opportunity to see the big picture before we render an opinion and forward it on to City Council. I don't know that there's any great urgent issue that would prevent us from, I don't know, having a continuance on this, but at the same token, I'm not sure that if we were to give an opinion and forward it, the applicant would have an opportunity to meet with Civic League before presenting it to City Council. So I guess that would be my question.
Okay.
My vote, and my recommendation would be that if it passes this body, the applicant, make sure they meet with the Civic League before it goes to City Council, so they don't have this kind of discrepancy at City Council.
I would agree with that too, Matt, that they get together before council, but the applicant, the Civic League, was notified back in June of the application. I think there was ample time, you know, to reach out on either side.
To Commissioner Newman's point, I feel like we're penalizing the applicant a little bit when he, it appears he did what he's supposed to do. The notification went, the process was followed, and although it would only be a month, it is still a penalty upon the applicant.
If this goes through you today, it'll appear in council on August 22nd.
Could we stipulate in our vote, Lenny, that we have the applicant assure that he would meet with that community before it goes to council? Mr. Maliva?
Well, you can express whatever your expectation is, and that can be included in your report to council. Your vote will not be contingent on whether or not he follows through with it, but it will be in the correspondence.
Ready for motion?
Any other comment, commissioners?
I'm not sure I'm clear on what we're asking of the applicant with respect to...
I think what we're saying to the applicant is that he should take all efforts to meet with the Civic League before it appears at City Council's agenda on the 22nd of August.
The Civic League meeting, as Mr. Corbin said, is August 7th. Did I get that right?
That is correct.
Good.
And I assume you can make time for the applicant at your meeting?
So are we hearing that the applicant is, will be meeting with the Civic League? Is that...
We're voting on the application as presented, and we're asking the applicant in all good faith to make sure that he puts forth the effort to meet with that commission, that community before it goes to City Council.
And rest assured, George and I are at council, and we will be there to explain what your wishes were.
Any unreadiness, commissioners?
No.
Lenny?
The motion is to recommend that the special exception be approved, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Haljens?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with us on this, and I'm going to ask Mr. Corbin to, just like I would tell myself, pay more attention to your email. Thank you, sir.
Number six, Fuddruckers for a special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment at 7750 Tidewater Drive, Suite 301.
Hello again. This is an application from Fuddruckers for a special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment at 7750 Tidewater Drive, Suite 301. This is, it's a current existing restaurant, operating now as an eating establishment in the Little Creek Marketplace Shopping Center, which is at Tidewater Drive and East Little Creek Road. It's a commercial property surrounded by other commercial uses, and again, the proposal will be to add on-premise alcohol to an existing restaurant. So as you can see here, the C3 is the zoning district here, shopping center, various other commercial zoning districts nearby in this corridor. The hours of operation are listed here. They are proposing for operation and the sale of alcohol, 10:30 AM until 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 10:30 AM until 10:30 PM, Friday and Saturday, and 10:00 AM until 10:00 PM, Sunday. The capacity would be 123 seats indoors. They have 40 seats outdoors, and then 251 total capacity. And with that, staff recommends approval with the conditions as proposed.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions of Mr. Whitney, commissioners? Standby, Chris. Thank you. And I acknowledge that there's no opposition to this application. We will acknowledge Vincent Lau, as well as, help me with this one.
Sure, I'll ask Mr. Whitney.
Thank you.
As stated.
As stated, right. Lenny?
Very well done. The motion before you is to recommend that the special exception be approved, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Haljens?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make the recommendation to council. Thank you and good luck.
Doc Gray is on the rocks for a special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment at 4712 Hampton Boulevard.
All right. So this is an application by Doc Gray's, and it's for a special exception for an eating and drinking establishment. The site's located on your map here on Hampton Boulevard, between 47th and 48th Street, in the Old Dominion Shopping Center, and the space that this application is proposing to go in was the space most previously occupied by Gray's Pharmacy, and it is a request for an eating and drinking establishment. Here's a look at the zoning map. Zone C2 permits the proposed use. And here's a look at the hours, 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, seven days a week, 128 seats indoors, no seats outdoors, and 143 total capacity. And then here's a quick look at the site as it looks today. You'll see that there is a, not any landscaping on the site, and there's no sidewalk along 48th Street. And then here's a look at the proposed site plan that the applicant and the property owner have come together to propose as part of this special exception request, and it shows a new sidewalk along 48th Street and significant landscape site improvements to the site to install a proper landscape verge with street trees and then a landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the parking. Substantial improvements to the site. Staff does recommend approval of the application. We do also have a letter of no opposition from the Highland Park Civic League. Any questions?
Thanks, Matt. Any questions, commissioners, or Mr. Simon? Standby, Matt, just in case. The chair would like to acknowledge Doc Gray's on the rocks, Melody Kendrol and Stephanie Kendrol, and also Mr. William T. Gray. Or is that Gary?
Gray.
Gray. Thank you both for being here. No opposition.
The motions recommend the special exception be approved, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Haljens?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make the recommendation to council. Good luck.
Next application is Pizza Fusion for a special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment at 4417 Monarch Way.
All right. And this is also a request for a special exception for an eating and drinking establishment. This is located in the Old Dominion University Village on the corner of 45th and Monarch Way, developed with a myriad of different uses, and it's zoned UV University Village. Here's the hours, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, seven days a week, for both operation and alcohol. 42 seats indoors, 16 seats outdoors, 75 total capacity. This is the space most previously occupied by Starbucks, and I do have a letter of no opposition from the Highland Park Civic League, and staff does recommend approval.
Thanks, Matt. And the chair acknowledges there is no opposition to this application. Mr. Newcomb?
The motions recommend the special exception be approved, subject to the conditions. The motions recommend the special exception be approved, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Haljens?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye, will make the recommendation to council. Good luck. That concludes our public hearing agenda. Mr. Homewood, do you have anything further for us?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Malita?
No, sir.
Commissioners, any comment or question? Our thanks as always to staff, and with that, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.